This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we're also meeting the meeting of the zoning commission for April 22nd, 2020. Let's see, due to the coronavirus 19 pandemic, we are conducting this meeting on go-to-meeting. I will call on the following elected members to speak up as present. Mike Henrik. Mike, do we have you? All right, we'll come back to him. Deion Francis?
I got his picture on my screen.
So I've gotta, I've gotta, I've gotta go through my phone to hear this.
Yeah, it looks like we're all having an audio problem, Mike, so if you can, if that'll work.
Yeah, I'm on the computer and the phone, so.
Okay. All right, so Mike is here, Deion is not. Vigliotti, I saw you.
Here.
Okay, we got your audio good. Alex Ficola?
Present.
Okay, any alternates? Rich Fredette?
Present.
Uh, Lamb, again?
Present.
And Linda Manos?
Here.
Okay, so we got four full members and, uh, alternate, so, um, let's see, rotate a bit. Uh, Rich, you were on last time. Lamb, why don't we let you take this one?
Oh, good.
Okay. And we also have President Jay Hibansky.
Here.
Uh, Pat Sullivan. And Gail DiCilio.
Here.
And, let's see, I know I can see it here as guests, we have Barry Knott and Jim Fitzpatrick.
Right here.
Yeah.
Let me go through this script here. Before I call them into order, I'd like to remind everyone to raise their hand if they would like to be recognized by the Chair and wait to be recognized, called on each time throughout the meeting. Please identify yourself by name and your title each time you speak. Uh, this is for Governor Lamont's executive, um, order. Um, group, uh, what was that again, Jay? It was seven, J K and L?
H, executive orders, H, I and J.
Seven H, I and J. Uh, which allows us to conduct virtual meetings. The meeting is free to listen to, but people may speak at the invitation of the Chair. Okay, first item on the agenda. And, give me one second here. I thought I had it pulled up. Twenty twenty.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jay Hibansky. If you'd like me to read the first item in, I'd be happy to.
Sure. Okay, I added up, but you're a little bit ahead of me, so, okay, go ahead.
Okay, uh, first item is, uh, 577 Holly Lane, Petition of Par One Development LLC, uh, seeking special case and site plan review approval to establish a full-service restaurant in a CF zone. And just to clarify, this is Jay Hibansky.
Thank you, Jay. Petitioner present, Mr. Knott, is that you?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name is Barry Knott. I am a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn with offices at 1656 Main Street in Stratford. And I'm here this evening on behalf of Par One Development LLC, the managing member of which is Jim Fitzpatrick, who is also present at this hearing. Now, this is an application for special case approval. The subject, now, by the way, I have submitted fourteen exhibits and the certificate of mailing to Jay last week by email. And I understand from Jay that he has posted all of the exhibits, of which, as I said, there are fourteen plus the certificates of mailing on the website. So you should all have access to the exhibits that I'm going to be making reference to during my presentation. So, the subject premises the site of an abandoned single-family home located at 577 Holly Lane. This property is located immediately to the north of the medical building at 495 Holly Lane and is located two parcels to the north of the North Town Shopping Center, also known as the Big Y Shopping Center. It is located directly across the street from one of the entrances to the Marriott Hotel and another medical office building adjacent to the Marriott. Further up Holly Lane towards Huntington Road are a couple of condo projects and, uh, one consisting of nine units, the other consisting of forty units. In January of 2017, this commission changed the designation of this property from RS3, Single Family Residential, to CF, Limited Business. And I say Limited Business because in a CF zone, commercial use is permitted, but it requires special case approval. You get to review the site plan and get discretion as to whether you want to approve it or not, as opposed to a CA zone where the uses are automatically approved. So, the zone was changed to CF in 2017. In January of 2018, the inland wetlands commission approved, uh, an application to build this building. And in February of 2018, the zoning commission approved the special case application, the soil erosion control application, and a liquor permit for a Class D liquor license for exactly the same use that we are here on tonight. So you, which begs the question, why are we here tonight going over the same thing that you've already approved once? The answer to that is, as you know, there's an eighteen-month deadline within which the applicant has got to take out a building permit or they lose their special case approval. And we inadvertently missed the eighteen-month deadline, therefore we have to go and get the special case approval all over again. Now, wetlands approval, the change of zone, the soil erosion control, and the liquor application don't have that eighteen-month, uh, stipulation. And so those, those permits are still valid. The only one that we need is a special case approval. And Pat Sullivan can advise you, but it's my understanding that under Connecticut law, as long as the new application is exactly the same as the old application, the zoning commission must approve the new application. But I won't tell you what you have to do and what you don't have to do. So, the first five exhibits, uh, in the packet I gave you are photographs of Holly Lane and various areas in proximity to this property. You've all been by there a million times. You know what we're talking about. Exhibit one is the entrance, the exit from the Marriott. The property is right across the street behind those fir trees. Exhibit two is another photograph of the premises taken from Holly Lane. And you can see in the right side of that, uh, photograph, the Big Y Shopping Center sign is out on Holly Lane. Exhibit three is the entrance to the Big Y Shopping Center. And you'll see the medical building on the left there. And on the other side of that medical building is the house that we're talking about. Exhibit four is a photo of the lot behind those fir trees. Once again, is hidden that single-family house. And exhibit five is another photo looking back towards the house from the condos down on Holly Lane. Exhibit six is an aerial photo of the area surrounding the subject premises on which I have numbered the locations from which exhibit. So if you go to the, and look at those photos in relation to this aerial photo, you can see where those photos are. Uh, it's not that important for all. With the air. Exhibit eight is an existing condition, uh, excuse me, is, exhibit seven, rather, is a Stratford GIS map showing this parcel. And I show you this because you'll see that this is a very long and narrow lot. This lot is about 3.2 acres. The portion of it that we're going to be developing is about an acre up by Holly Lane, which is in the left side of exhibit seven. The back of it is primarily wetlands, although there is some upland in the back of the property. It is our plan to develop the first, you know, half acre, three-quarters of an acre of this property, which is all upland. And then we're going to put a conservation easement on the rest of it and dedicate it to, uh, open space. And that was something that I agreed to do, uh, in consideration for the wetlands approval. Uh, they were anxious to have that done. Exhibit eight is a, an existing condition survey of the property, which is the subject of this application. And, once again, you can see, you can see that area at the top. And, and you'll see that, uh, the pink area is that long lot that I just showed you in exhibit seven. And to the left of that pink area, you'll see there is a, a building encircled, uh, by a semicircle out near the road. And that's the area where this construction is going to take place. And in the bottom part, portion of that exhibit, you'll see the existing building, uh, the existing one-story house. And then I've got that existing house encircled in blue. And that blue circle is where the inland wetlands are come up to on this property. And I'll get into that for more in a minute. But the blue, the blue semicircle on exhibit eight is the location of land wetlands. Exhibit nine is site plan of what we are proposing to do. And, give me one second. This is a 2,250 square foot, single-tenant structure, one-story structure for a full-service restaurant with a Class D restaurant liquor permit, including a 400-square-foot outdoor patio seating sixteen people. As you can see from exhibit eight, this is a long, narrow, 3.2-acre lot, of which only 23,696 square feet, or .17 acres, is being used for proposed development. The balance of the site will remain in its natural state, which is primary wetlands. And as I indicated, will be subject to a conservation easement. The site plan shows thirty-six full-size parking spaces and two ADA-compliant handicap spaces, together with a loading berth for deliveries. The plan also shows a ten-by-seventeen enclosed dumpster pad, city sewers, storm drainage, electric, gas, telephone cable, and fiber optics are available at the site. The property is located directly on Holly Lane, midway between Nichols Avenue and Huntington Road. Exhibit 10 is a copy of the zoning commission approval letter where they changed the zone from residential to CA back in 2017. Exhibit 11 is a copy of the wetland permit that we received in January of 2018. And exhibit 12 is a copy of a traffic study that we submitted to the zoning, the last time we came in for approval. And this traffic study is still relevant now because nothing really has changed on Holly Lane with respect to the generation of traffic. By the way, if and when, and hopefully tonight, when this thing gets approved, this is going to be the last commercial development on Holly Lane. There's nothing else left to be developed, so this is it. This thing gets approved, Holly Lane's done, on both sides of the street, quite frankly. So, and that, so that's good. I mean, it, it's been a long time coming, but Stratford finally caught up to Trumbull in, in developing the perimeter of the town, uh, as Trumbull has been doing for decades. Now, I want to, um, discuss the administrative comments. The Fire Department, Building Department, Engineering Department, Conservation Department, Public Works Department, and Economic Development Department all had no comment. Lieutenant Gugliotti of the Police Department wrote, "I have reviewed the plans for 577 Holly Lane, and I do not see any issue as of right now. I don't see why the restaurant project cannot move forward." Maureen Whalen of the Health Department wrote, "Full plan review and menu are required to be submitted to the Health Department. Specification sheets are needed for all restaurant equipment. A dumpster with a four-inch concrete pad and chain-link fence with privacy checks is required, not opposed to the concept." Obviously, Maureen's comments will be complied with. The dumpster pad has already been incorporated into our site plan. And Jay makes, uh, in his administrative comments, Jay makes the following comments. "The surrounding area consists of commercial development, with this parcel being one of the only remaining residential uses in the immediate area. The request for a restaurant liquor permit is somewhat typical of similar dining establishments, and if approved, should adhere to all state law requirements. The Office of Planning and Zoning has no issues regarding the approval of the sought-after liquor permit as Class D liquor permits are permitted in a CF zone." Jay then inquired about the hours of operation, which will be from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week. He suggests that all light poles proposed for the parking lot should be selected based upon their ability to limit ambient light pollution that might impact a budding neighbor, neighboring property owners, and wetland species. By the way, there are no neighboring, uh, residential houses. There's the closure of residential houses on the other side of the three, 3.2 acres that we're going to leave in its natural state. However, uh, the same issue came up at the Wetlands Commission meeting, and applicant agreed as a condition of the approval to provide such restricted lighting. Finally, Jay requested that the applicant obtain a letter from a licensed engineer ensuring that the project complies with the town of Stratford's MS4 storm permit. Uh, this issue was also discussed at the Wetlands Commission, and, uh, Jim Fitzpatrick has agreed to provide such documentation, which I believe has already been provided. Uh, and then, as far as this application's compliance with the special case criteria, under section 20.2.1. The first is, "The proposed use shall be in conformance to all requirements of the district in which it is located, in addition to any other standard prescribed by the regulations." Here we are proposing a permitted use in a commercial zone in an area which is already commercially developed. Therefore, we comply with that. Second standard is, "The location, size, and intensity of such use shall be compatible and harmonious in relation to the size of the property and existing neighborhood developments." Once again, we are proposing to use only .17 acres of a 3.2-acre site for this proposed use. The balance of the site's going to be encumbered by a conservation easement and will therefore remain in its natural state in perpetuity. That conservation, and obviously gets recorded on the land records and what, and it's in favor of the town of Stratford. So unless the town and the Wetlands Commission, so unless the Wetlands Commission and the town of Stratford want to release it in the future, which I cannot see happening, that property's going to remain in its natural state forever. The, uh, all of the area of this parcel which are but residential neighbors, I got that already. "The proposed use shall be in conformance with town plan of development. Once again, this is a permitted use under the existing zoning regulations and the town plan of development." "The design locations, details of the proposed use shall not adversely affect safety of the streets nor increase traffic congestion." As Lieutenant Gugliotti opined, "I have reviewed the plans, and I do not see an issue as of right now. I don't see why the restaurant project cannot move forward." And then, once again, exhibit 12, which is our traffic study, uh, concludes that there are no problems with respect to traffic coming in and out of Holly Lane in a 2,200-square-foot restaurant. I mean, it's not going to be a large traffic generator. Uh, the traffic engineer says, "Holly Lane is a collector roadway, providing connections to major development along the roadway, including the Trumbull Marriott. Across the street, Holly Lane is designed to carry this traffic volume. And just north of the site, it has a daily traffic volume of over 8,000 a day." There is just one reported crash in the area of the proposed site driveway reported in the last three years, according to Yukon. "The proposed site has ample sight lines and will generate less than one vehicle per minute at any peak hour. A fraction of the traffic carried on Holly Lane on a daily basis during the peak hours. In conclusion, the proposed development will not have a significant impact on traffic operations on Holly Lane. The emission of noise light, odor, smoke, gas shall not adversely affect the area, and this use is not going to result in any negative consequences vis those issues." Uh, "The proposed use shall not adversely attack valuation of neighboring properties. For the applicant, it is just continuing the commercial development both sides of Holly Lane. This is one of the last parcels of undeveloped, uh, property on the street. As I indicated, that which is being proposed here is consistent with the neighborhood and will have no negative impact upon tax valuation of neighboring properties." Finally, "The proposed use shall not create any fire or police hazards. As indicated by the administrative comments from both the police and the Fire Department, they have no issues with this proposed development." Now, unlike the last time that I made this presentation, this time, because of the advent of the new Architectural Review Board, uh, we appeared before the Architectural Review Board on April 9th, 2020, by virtual meeting, as we are doing tonight, to discuss the architectural components of the proposed restaurant. Exhibit 13 is an architect rendering of the main level floor plans and west elevation of the proposed restaurant. All aspects of the proposal were discussed at length by the ARB members and the applicant. The ARB had questions and comments which needed further information from us. Therefore, the ARB meeting was continued until April 15th, at which an email from Jim Fitzpatrick dated April 13th, 2020, was submitted to SSMITHA, addressing the additional information sought by the ARB. Exhibit 14 is a copy of that email submitted to the ARB by Jimmy Fitzpatrick. At the April 15th, 2020 ARB meeting, after discussion regarding the contents of Mr. Fitzpatrick's email and additional testimony from him and me at that meeting, the ARB was unanimously to recommend approval of the project, subject to the applicant complying to terms and conditions of his April 13th email to SSMITHA. And there is in your file, a letter from the ARB in which, and there's two of them. One, there's an initial letter, and then there's a revised letter. The revised letter is the one that controls. And in that letter, the ARB articulates the changes that they want to be made to the architectural elevation. And I hate to say this, because it calls me to have another level of, uh, review on economic development in the town of Stratford. But the recommendations that were made by the ARB in this particular case were quite good. And the building is going to be more attractive. Don't, don't be laughing now, Chris, you know, because I said that. Uh, don't tell anybody.
I won't, it's our secret.
As a result of that, uh, the building is going to be nicer, actually, than that bomb that Jimmy proposed in exhibit. So, anyway, it's going to be very nice. It's been approved once. We, we screwed up by not getting, taking out the building permit time, and we need your help getting it a second time, and we would ask you to do so tonight if you possibly could. Jimmy and I are both here to answer questions.
Okay, questions from yours? In the interest of doing this orderly, let's go into, uh, members. Mr. Vigliotti, any questions?
Yeah, hi, uh, so I'm looking at, uh, the, uh, the west ele, the elevation, and the date on it is from March, I guess. It's hard to read at March of this year. So is there going to be, is there going to be, is this the, does this align with what the Architectural Review Board is proposing, or is it, how different is it going to be based on what this drawing shows?
Well, it, it is the, it is the before pictures, it's the before rendering. The after rendering was not available for us to provide to the Architectural Review Board. Because of the Corona thing, our architect was unable to provide us with an exhibit in time for the ARB meeting on, on April 15th. I'll let, uh, Jim Fitzpatrick explain to you the difference between the exhibit that you're looking at and that which the ARB wants and that which he is going to provide. Jimmy, could you do that?
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Jim Fitzpatrick, yes. Uh, actually, it is going to change. There's the, um, the Boston gable that, that you see on there now, that's the big, you get, you get to the peak, uh, and then there's another, uh, area that goes up. That, that gable's going to come off. We're going to, we're going to bring that gable down, and we're going to have a longer ridge line, and we're going to stick a cupola up on the top, and I'm going to incorporate a clock in that just to lower that down a little bit. It's going to look really nice when it's done. Didn't, we thought the Boston gable would look good, but I just, we couldn't put it together, uh, the right way to make it look good. It just was standing too tall. And the building, you know, was very close to the, to the road, so nobody would see the effects of the clock. I'd like to see the clock here, just so, you know, draw people, you know, looking at the building.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Lamb, any questions?
Hello, Chris.
Yeah, Mr. Ficola?
Uh, the question was answered about the time of, uh, when it was going to be open, and I'm very happy with seeing something like this come into that area.
Okay. Uh, Henrik?
Yeah, so, for one, we have to believe Jimmy because he's, he's got a halo. I don't know if you guys can see that, but.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Oh, right there, yeah. I know, right?
But, um, so, so, so the gate, the, the, what you call the Boston-style roof, which is similar to what I would call like a Duchess diner-type roofline, um, is, and you're going to have a full hip roof?
I'm sorry, Mike, can you say that again, please?
So the roof will be a hip roof as opposed to a gabled roof?
Yes, it will be. It'll be a hip, it's going to be a hip with a cupola on top.
Okay. So outside of that, I mean, you, you've made improvements to the aesthetics of the building. There's no changes to any of it, except you've made it look nicer.
Exactly. We're at, we're going to put some, some, uh, some architectural stone down below the windows. We're raising the windows up. My, my interior ceiling height's going to be at 12 feet, uh, plus or minus an inch or two. Uh, so we're going to have some good volume in there. Uh, we have an awning that's going out on the, uh, top of the front windows facing Holly Lane because I have some planned curved lighting that's going to be, uh, pushed down on every window for accent lighting. Uh, I really want to dress it up. I want, I want it to be a nice-looking building that will draw people in, and then only complement that with good food and service. So I'm looking forward to getting this thing going. And, uh, and, and I think it's just really needed over in that area. As you know, there's really not a lot of food, uh, places over there.
Harvest House is up there. We did have some of their sushi tonight, so, um. But so, so, yeah, I mean, you, you've been up in Holly Lane. You know, you and I have worked together on a number of these things. Uh, you've always been a great neighbor. Uh, you, you've taken into the neighborhood, you know, concerns of the neighborhood, made sure everything that you did up there was, was considerate of those who lived in the area. I still get compliments to this day, um, of the folks up behind the Big Y who are still impressed with the way you handled that project back in the day and, and that you still continue to be a good neighbor. So I'm, I'm looking forward to, and assuming you would, you would behave in the same manner, and, uh, you know, what you've done there has been a great addition to Stratford, and I'm looking forward to, uh, to another restaurant, another, another development by you.
Uh, Mike, I really appreciate those comments. I don't, I don't hear them that much, and, uh, you know, it's, it's great to hear, so thank you very much.
Okay, I think, um, most of the items have been covered, uh, that were in the letter. Uh, the, just to confirm, and I, I think the last time when this was in front of us, I had asked the same question. So, is a left-hand turn is going to be possible, um, from the, uh, as you're exiting the diner? Is that correct?
Yes, Jim Fitzpatrick, petitioner, yes. Uh, there will be a, and there will, there will be no light. It won't be controlled, so it'll, it'll be, you know, just, you have to stack, you know, they'll have to. Oh, my goodness. They'll, they'll get to, they'll, uh, you know, they'll have to work their way into traffic. Uh, it, it shouldn't be too bad. I mean, there's 38 parking spaces. It really shouldn't be bad. It's going to, it's going to be open long enough during the day where, where the, you know, and the traffic is, is controlled by the light there, so. But people are going to have to learn how to do it, and, and that'll happen.
Yeah, I, I, I remember hoping that there was a way that we could have had it routed around the medical building there, but I guess that's not possible, if I remember the old plans, um, here, so. Okay, uh, any other questions from, uh, Mr. Henrik?
I just got a notification on my mail that this meeting will end in two minutes. Is that, is everybody getting that thing?
Yeah, we heard the same thing.
Does it just roll over, or do we have to re, re-up, or what's the deal?
I guess we'll find out in one minute.
One minute.
I know what's going to happen.
Well, if it does, if we do leave, hopefully Jim, uh, Jay will send a new link and we can rejoin the meeting.
Yeah, if it, if it does go out, everybody just sit tight and let's see what happens. Any other questions, uh, while we're here?
No.
Well, I, I, I have a comment. It's, it's really crucial to be approved tonight. I don't have a problem with further discussion, but is it going to be possible for you to vote? but it could be possible for you to vote on this now, and then we can have further discussion later on if you want, if you need additional information.
I think we're gonna be ready to move for a vote. I just think we're gonna run out of time. I just wanna have Jay have the last word on this. I have a, I have a, I can text him as soon as we cut.
Hi, this is Jay Hibansky. Sorry, I got, I got kicked out. I've been having some connectivity problems, but I'm back.
Oh, okay.